This is the regular meeting of the Township of Washington in accordance with requirements of New Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings. Notice that this meeting was linked to advertised in a character post in South Jersey Times and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Fire exits are located through the double doors to your left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who does not wish to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on Comcast Channel Nine every week, Sunday at nine PM, Wednesday at seven PM, Friday at ten PM, and Saturday at ten PM, and will continue until the next meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and can be found on the Agenda, which is on the Township's official website. Please follow WT TV Productions on YouTube. Presentation of colors by the Washington Township Honor Guard.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, on! Right shoulder, on! Ready, two.
Please turn the flag for request of allegiance.
Detail, attention.
Translations?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, on! Right shoulder, on! Ready, two.
I want to thank Officer Hagley-Areney for singing the National Anthem for us. We have Chief Gersik coming up to give his five-year plan. Oh, sorry, Chief, I did a wrong call.
Mr. Delapia?
Here.
Mr. Delparella?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Yerkes?
Present.
Mayor Gazzanelli?
Here.
Mrs. Backage?
Here.
Mr. Platt?
Here.
Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am proud to present you with my Washington Township Police Department's five-year strategic plan. I also included a police officer's staffing report, our annual police car fleet report, and a storage building report. The five-year plan builds on our accomplishments from my first five-year plan. This 2023-2027 plan is my vision and goals for the Police Department for the next five years. Realistic goals and objectives have been identified that will improve the quality of life for our residents and enhance agency efficiency and accountability. The plan focuses on numerous areas with key points addressing policing and school safety, community caretaker and outreach, projects and facilities, equipment and technology, professional development, and most importantly, Police Department staffing levels. The price of a fully-staffed Police Department is a commitment to public safety and keeping our residents safe. The attached staff report indicates that we are understaffed compared to the Gloucester County average, the New Jersey statewide average, and also according to police officer population ratios used by the FBI and the Chiefs of Police Association. A key goal of the plan includes a feasibility study for a new police headquarters. Police headquarters built in 1967 is old, obsolete, outdated, overcrowded, and inefficient for police work. As we implement this plan, we will continuously measure our progress, evaluate outcomes, and hold ourselves accountable to ensure we are meeting the goals and needs of the residents of Washington Township. The strategic plan is our pledge to provide outstanding service to our community now and in the future. Thank you. I make myself available at any time to meet with any council members, any committees of the mayor we want to put together to discuss any of the issues in the staffing report, the five-year plan, the police fleet report, or the projects and facilities. Thank you. I'd like to move on. Tonight is a joyous occasion for our agency and one of our police officers and his family. After much anticipation, Detective Tommy Myers is being named as our 2022 Police Officer of the Year. Detective Myers, could you please come forward? Detective Myers was nominated by Sergeant Keller and Sergeant Giselback for having a quality work ethic, high degree of professionalism, positive attitude, and dedication to our agency's department community caretaker mission. Detective Myers' keen detective skills were evident during the evening hours of July 7th, 2022. Philadelphia police were searching for an unidentified center-city law office rape suspect. Area news outlets shared a video of the accused rape suspect walking into a law office building. Detective Myers was on night duty detective and received a potential tip indicating that a subject matching the description of the wanted person was walking in the area of Ed Harbor Road and Ronald Lane in Washington Township. Detective Myers responded out to the area businesses to search for available video surveillance. He retrieved video from the express march showing the wanted subject waiting for a New Jersey transit bus. Detective Myers came back to Police Headquarters and created a BOLO alert, Be On The Lookout, that was posted to our Washington Township Police Department's social media pages. Within minutes, the social media post was shared 1,900 times. The BOLO resulted in an immediate call to our 911 center indicating that the accused subject was outside the Jefferson Hospital. Patrol officers fanned out to the Jefferson campus, and within minutes, this violent predator was in custody. Detective Myers' diligence and investigative skills were complimented by the Philadelphia Special Victims Unit, and most recently with a proclamation of appreciation from the FBI Philadelphia Regional Office. Congratulations, Tommy. We appreciate your diligence and outstanding police work for almost 20 years.
Thank you. We have one officer in the department to stand up for you real quick. I just want to address each and every one of you.
The other officers, just stand up, please. Guys, please stand up.
It's clear to me as I look out at each and every one of you, the reason I'm successful here tonight is because I'm surrounded by excellence. I don't have enough words to say how wonderful each and every officer is in this department. I mean, just amazing people, and I'm honored to have your support tonight. So, thank you. If I could just be real with everyone real quick and just, I'm not going to take a lot of your time. You know, if you really just strip away all the noise and look at the core fundamentals of what our agency is, and really look what this agency's built on, this foundation that we have, and what you're left with is, you know, a relationship with the community. Now, I've been an officer here for, you know, 18 years, and I've seen multiple community events, as most of you have all worked our community events. Over these past few years, I've watched Chief Becker's accelerate and expand these community events into the stratosphere. And I mean, these events just get bigger and bigger with food trucks, and they're just, it's wonderful to see. And the reason I'm ranting about all this is just leading me to my point of why I'm the recipient here tonight and what this award really represents, you know. It really does represent, you know, the relationship with the community, and that's what our core mission is here. I don't want to be, just don't want to forget that there's a victim in all this, even though they're not from this area, they have the support of the Washington Township community. You know, I'm just happy to be part of the process. You know, the real glory goes to the hospital staff that even called it in, the woman that was working at night. I mean, talk about being on top of your game, just being on point, watching the news, being diligent, I mean, total rock star. For her to call, I'm talking to her, she's telling me, yes, this is that person, it's one, it's this person, I mean, all the glory goes to that person, the hospital staff that called it in, I mean, everyone, the patrol division that was working at night, the men that were working at night, this moved in. I'm telling you, like, all cylinders were firing that night, and it was just wonderful
Okay, we're going to continue with our presentations. The mayor's going to present a certificate of achievement to Isaiah Brown, the Washington
Standing beside me is Isaiah Brown. He is a Washington Township High School student and a track star. He is beyond his years, he serves his community, he does well, we have his family up front here, we want a little round of applause for his mom as well. Thank you for your service, please stand up, please. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. So, the same thing is about you, Mr. Track Star here. He broke some records at Washington Township High School for indoor 55-meter hurdle, he broke the record this past week. This great news came to us from one of our council members and wanted to make sure that we were out in the community and letting folks know that this is what it's about. We want to share all positivity. You've brought some positivity back into the town, we appreciate that, we want to see you go for the stars. This is what it's all about. So, we have a certificate here honoring you this evening for your accomplishments, so continue doing what you do, we'd love to see you again, come back and visit us, and thank you so much, you've raised a great son. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Congratulations, keep up the work. Appreciate it. I'm very well, I'm having some...
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate your service. Anything you need, call me, you're my friend. Thank you, appreciate it.
We're continuing our presentations. We have Paul Dilks come up to the front, recognition of community service.
And your wife, come on up. So, some of you may recognize Mr. Dilks here, he's a member of Washington Township Rotary from 2014 until present, he's the coordinator of Kathy McGee Memorial Holiday Meals, 2009 until present, prior Grand Night, Knights of Columbus, 2008, present, member of the Church of the Holy Family, present, volunteer Alzheimer's Association, volunteer Camden County Animal Shelter, and husband and father of two. Pretty busy, I would say, right? So, I remember working with Paul a few years ago with the Meals on Wheels, and boy, there were a lot of folks that you helped that day, and I can't even imagine how many more that you've helped throughout the years. I know there's somewhat of a number out there, and you're going to be able to give us that information, but we wanted to award Paul for his community service and everything that I've just read off to you, what he's accomplished. We appreciate that, and we and council, we wanted to make sure that you were awarded again with this certificate. We want you to be recognized in the community, we thank you for all the service as well as the community. When you give back like that, it comes back to you twofold, and we understand that. So, we just want folks to, you know, come out and help and be as part of the community, be with us and the community, and help those folks that are in need, and that's what you do. So, we greatly appreciate that, we just wanted to offer you this certificate this evening and recognize you at tonight's meeting. That is for you. If you don't mind, can I get council members down? I know you had a few words that you wanted to say as well.
Many of you don't know me, but the worst thing you can ever do is give me a microphone. I'm here to tell you, it's amazing what the power of one individual can do, and Kathy McGee was the person who started this program 16 years ago, we've been doing it for 16 years. Kathy McGee found out Meals on Wheels in Gloucester County does not deliver on Thanksgiving, Christmas, or Easter. They give people a batting lunch a couple days before, and it was her mission to make sure everybody who needed one got a warm meal on the days we hold most sacred in this country, which is Thanksgiving, Christmas, and on Easter. The sacrifices that are made by a lot of the volunteers, if you really think about it, giving up your Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter for a good cause. And, you know, Kathy, when she first started this, she was like, who can I get to help me? And she reached out to Father Hughes at the time, he was the pastor at the Church of the Holy Family, and he basically said, you need to get the Knights involved. And next thing you know, she asked the Knights, and we jumped on, and the very first Meals Program on Thanksgiving, we delivered 78 meals. And it's amazing how much it's grown since that time. Now, about, I guess about 10 years ago, Kathy passed away, tragically actually. She was a teacher in this district, she taught speech therapy, and I only knew her three days a year, kind of funny, but it's amazing the impact of one individual. And, well, she got the Knights of Columbus involved, and when she passed away, someone had to step up. I wasn't going to let the program die, I wasn't. And next thing you know, we started expanding, her biggest fear was the county was going to come in and shut it down, because we're serving food. So, first thing I did after she passed away, called the county, got them involved, and next thing you know, as we grow it, I realized we didn't have enough Knights coming out to volunteer, we need 40 to 50 people to make this really truly successful. So, I opened up the community, and this was my entrance into Washington Township Rotary. I was invited to do a presentation, and then they corralled me in, and that's how I joined Washington Township Rotary. And the next thing you know, I was doing a presentation for the Washington Township Chamber of Commerce, you're going to love this story. And the, afterwards, after I did my presentation on the program, a gentleman approached me and basically said, is this a Christian thing? And I was like, no, we're actually opening up the community. And Paul Bunkin is his name, and many people probably in this town know who Paul Bunkin is, and maybe many in this room, and he is a member of the synagogue, and he said, if it's not a Christian thing, I think I can get people from the synagogue there. And that was about seven years ago. So, what turned out to be a small program actually became more of a community event, and this past Thanksgiving, we had 75, 75 volunteers come out and help, and that's just an amazing thing. The funny thing I like telling about the synagogue is, a couple Easters ago, I made an announcement at the Meals Program that the Jews outnumbered the Christians on that day, so, volunteer-wise. So, it is a great, great event, and if anyone in the room would like to participate, it's real easy to find our Facebook page, it's Kathy McGee, it's spelled a little differently, it's M-E-G-E, Kathy McGee Memorial Holiday Meals Program. And it is a wonderful thing, you know, I love the recognition here, but I'm going to ask the Knights to come forward that are here today also to get their picture, because without everyone in the Knights of Columbus, and also the synagogue and all the volunteers, not only that, all the businesses, there are businesses in Washington Township who donate, Ace Hardware, ShopRite, let's see, Versus, Lishio's, it is amazing, this is virtually operated, we deliver 300, over 300 meals between 325 to 375 with virtually no budget, no budget. So, we also get a few caterers who cook our turkeys on Thanksgiving and Christmas, give them a little recognition too. We've had Paris Caterers in Gloucester Township, we've also had Estates and McGrow, we've had Adelfias, we've had Aleto's, cook our food, cook our turkeys for us, so, so many people need recognition, and I'm so glad that you've given me the mic so I can recognize all of the people who have contributed to this event. So, if you want, we'll take a picture real quick, I guess, and then I'll bring the Knights up if that's okay, but thank you for hearing my rant, I guess I probably talked a little
Knights, come on up. Everyone who's involved in the program, if there's anyone from the synagogue who's Thank you, guys, thank you for everything, you guys, I appreciate it, thank you, appreciate it, thank you. All right. And there, please be seated. Gentlemen, can we get a picture with, oh, yeah, the officer here, yeah. Congratulations. Great job, congratulations. Thank you so much, thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the bill list. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for January 18th, 2023? So, a second. Well, Paul?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Delparella?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes. Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular? Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for December 14th, 22?
Motion. Second.
Only the council president, council vice president can vote.
I'll second. Roll call.
Mr. Yerkes?
Abstained.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
I'm abstaining. Oh, December, I'm sorry.
Mr. Brown?
Abstained.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to approve the reorganization meeting minutes for January 3rd, 2023?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Following ordinances is for introduction only. Ordinance 1, 2023, adopting an amended redevelopment plan for the Washington Square redevelopment area. Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance 1-2023?
Can I make that motion?
Second. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the clerk will please transmit to the main.
Following ordinance is for introduction only. Ordinance 2, 2023, amending Chapter 2 of the Code of the Township of Washington entitled Administration.
I believe there's one modification to the ordinance on introduction in section, proposed Section 2-81. The first sentence currently reads, "Except as otherwise provided by law, no person shall be eligible or appointed to any board or committee of the township of Washington if they have made a claim or are partying to a lawsuit against the township or any of its officers or employees in the preceding five years or new modifications in the preceding 10 years." So with that amendment, I would ask to call for a motion to introduce.
Can I get a motion with the amendment to the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolutions. Can I get a motion to remove from the table Resolution 23, 2023? Resolution consenting to the appointment of Nancy Mizakio to Economic Development Consultant and authorizing the proper officials to execute an agreement for professional services for a term of one year?
Can I make that motion?
I'll second.
Do a voice vote, I need removal from the table. You can make a wish.
Can I have a favor? Y'all all favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 23-2023?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Following resolutions are by consent agenda and only require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. Any member of the council wishes to have one removed, and hers separately, they need to indicate it prior to the reading. Does anybody have anything they need removed? I'm going to continue. Resolution 35, resolution supporting the drug driving initiative from February 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2023. Resolution 36, resolution amending Resolution 316-2022, authorizing refund tax overpayment. Resolution 37, resolution authorizing refund of tax overpayments. Resolution 38, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran located at 18 Bridge Drive, effective December 27th, 2022. Resolution 39, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran located at 2 Dana Drive, effectively November 1st, 2022. Resolution 40, resolution authorizing the transfer of budget appropriations. Resolution 41, resolution authorizing an agreement for keys clearing services at Washington Lake Park. Resolution 42, resolution authorizing the township of Washington to enter a cooperative pricing system with Omniad Partners Public Sector. Resolution 43, resolution awarding a copier and maintenance contract for the Township of Washington. Resolution 44, resolution accepting a maintenance guarantee from Lexiconcrete LLC for the 2021 road program, Johnson Road Project 08-18-T-404. Resolution 45, resolution awarding a contract to boot mechanical for the Jones Lane Outfall Project. Resolution 46, resolution appointing Anthony D. Simone as Director of Community Development and Construction Code Official. Resolution 47, resolution of the Township of Washington in the County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, in support of an application for a classified cannabis retail facility for botanical life. Resolution 48, resolution of the Township of Washington in the County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, in support of an application for a classified cannabis retail facility for Si LLC. Resolution 49, resolution of the Township of Washington in the County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, in support of an application Class A 5 cannabis retail facility for URS-NJ LLC. Can I get a motion to approve Resolutions 35 to Resolutions 49?
Motion.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Yerkes?
Yes.
Mr. Daborello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Dallapi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All business, new business, and reports. Start with that with Jack.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to say, the past two, it gives me great pleasure to say it's been a busy two weeks since the plan we were sworn in. I attended the Open Space Committee meeting last week, and happy to say that Leon was voted back in as president. Right?
You have some information.
Oh, thank you. And we had a very exciting meet. Lasted an hour and a half. A lot of work is being done on Cedar Lake, and Leon was kind enough to prepare this for me. The Open Space Committee meets every Tuesday at 7:00 in the flagroom, and we look forward to have public join in. The next meeting will be Valentine's Day, February 14th. We have a number of programs we plan to start in the spring and look forward to participation from the public. Invasive plants, especially ivy, grow out of native plants and strangle trees. We hope to start a program where every six weeks, volunteers help remove these plants from the park. We will supply the peroners. We celebrate Arbor Day, actually, the month of April and into May. We plan to distribute about 600 tree seedlings. Last year, we gave away 500, and the year before that, 400. This is part of the state's effort to recover the loss of trees due to Hurricane Sandy and the recent tornado last year. Like I said, this is open to the public. If you want to come out, you can participate, join, maybe in the flagroom, 7:00, February 14th. And we talked about the Cedar Lake project. It's being reclaimed. They're doing a lot of nice work there this spring. There's going to be a boardwalk and other facilities. I suggested that because of the problem we have with plastic recycling, that the engineer look into using material for recycled plastic. That would help the recyclers and the manufacturers of that product try to make a profit, make their venture economical. And it would help us in all communities in the long run who are paying for plastics to be recycled and taken away. So we invite the public to come out, and we look forward to coming there. The other committee, which hasn't met yet, but it's the MUA. Rich Silvesti is the president of that board. He unfortunately cannot be here tonight. But he did ask me to say that the next meeting will be Monday night, 6:15, at the MUA building. They meet once a month, it's the fourth Monday. And he said that the MUA purchased one acre of land on Frysville Road next to the dance studio about half a year ago. And proceeded to design a building. I went out to bid about six months ago. Weren't the bid to a builder. He said they should be breaking ground around the end of February or into March. He wanted to emphasize that the project is being funded by a bond that came to maturity. And this was presented when we voted on this in the MUA. I'm formerly a board member of the MUA, and I voted for the project, in that a bond was paid off. And with the money that was going towards that bond, it'll go towards the building of the new state-of-the-art MUA at no increase to the ratepayer for water or sewer as a result of this. It was all worked out by Elizabeth Raugal, who's the treasurer. They've done an excellent job, because when they started this last fall, because of the increase in building products, they halted. They went back out the bid, and they found a builder and suppliers that could come and meet the price that came in under what they were allowed to spend. So the only time your rates will go up is if the Gloucester County MUA raises the sewer rate and/or, of course, we're experiencing price increases in gasoline, diesel, chemicals, that type of thing. But they don't anticipate much of that at all. We do encourage people to attend the MUA. When I was on the board for 10 years, we were lucky to get one person every six months. So that's my report, Mr. Jerry.
Thanks, Jack.
Peter?
Thank you, Council President. So planning and zoning boards just had the reorg meetings, so there really wasn't much going on. I should have more to report after the next meeting. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank staff, the mayor, flat, and Chrissy, and the rest of the staff who've been accommodating, answering questions, and helping us get acclimated to this new position. It's a pleasure for the three of us to join Rich and Anthony and continue to serve, in my perspective, in the community that I've lived with in for over 50 years. The library committee met tonight. Unfortunately, I had work conflict. I could not make it, but I'll reach out to them and find out what I missed. The LEPC committee, they'll be meeting February 1st, and doing that by way of phone. So for the next meeting, I should have a report on that and the rent levy needs as needed. I also want to mention, we did include some much-needed dates in the township calendar for this year for the fire commission meetings. And we're going to make sure that the fire department gets involved and is, you know, recognized. We want to make sure that everybody's getting equal attention. Everybody does a great job, and we just want to make sure that also the Board of Fire Commissioners' election will be February 18th. The budget will be up for adoption as well to commissioners. So we want to make sure that the public is aware of the fire commission election and gets out. The budget is available on their website, and it can be requested if you go over to the Board of Fire Commissioners' office at East Holly Avenue. That's it.
Council, what are the polling times on that?
2:00 till 9:00 p.m.
Thank you, Don.
Rich?
Since I'm part of the historical preservation, coming up in April, they will have their annual car show the last Saturday in April. It's a great event. The Old Stone House Historical Preservation does a great job with other activities, with plein air. We do another summer activity and Christmas. So do get out to see it. The Old Stone House Village looks great now that it's been painted and taken care of and upgraded. Makes a difference in the community. The Washington Township Environmental meets tomorrow night, and also the old Historical Preservation Commission meets tomorrow night for the first time live. So it's important if you want to come out to those committees. Also, the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is making sure that citizens of Washington Township look out for their senior friends and make sure that when these big snowstorms hopefully do not come, that they help out their neighbors shoveling their snow, their sidewalks, and their driveways and their pathways in the back of their house. It's very, very important that you get involved in your neighborhood and help your neighbors. That's it.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the chief for your presentation. We will review everything and look over if we have any questions we will come back to. I want to congratulate our recipients tonight. Great job, all of them. Well deserved for all three of them. All dogs in the township are required to be registered and vaccinated. Please stop in the clerk's office to register your dog for 2023. We'll be holding a free rabies clinic on Saturday, March 11th, from 10:00 till 11:30 at the Public Works Garage located at Tomb Clure Drop. Our dog park is open, is located at Cedar Lake Park. Stop by the clerk's office to purchase a permit. Costs $10 for township residents and $20 for non-residents of the township. Municipal building is open to the public Monday through Friday from 8:00 till 5:00 p.m. There's a drop box in the parking lot of the municipal building for those who would prefer to avoid direct contact. Public participation. Please follow the public decorum posted, which has also been attached to the public agenda. Limit your comments to five minutes. Once you have completed your comments or questions, the council president will then ask if any member of the governing body or they're designated wishes to address your questions or comments. Can I get a motion to open to the public?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public wishes to speak? See none? Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to be heading into executive session. We expect the executive session to be closed for about 60-plus minutes. We do not anticipate any action to be taken after we come out.
Although we reserve the right to do so, right?
Although we do, yes. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 50, authorizing executive session 1, Township of Washington versus Gonter, and Perry versus Township of Washington?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.